Welcome. My name is Anita Sights. I am the mayor. And tonight is a June 28th City Council meeting. We apologize for the delay in starting. We were having technical difficulties with our broadcasts, but we are happy to be with you now. As of June 14th, the city has resumed meeting in person for City Council meetings, with the option for virtual participation by council and staff as necessary. In addition to in-person attendance, the community may also participate remotely by watching the live stream on the city YouTube channel or by dialing in by phone with the instructions on the meeting agenda webpage. We continue to support multiple opportunities for public comment, including in-person testimony, email, voicemail, and live remote audio. Many modifications have been made to council chambers for the safety of council and staff. This includes spacing council on the dais and limiting the number of staff participating in person. The Agenda section of the city website is the best place to check for details on participating in council meetings. The web address is www.cityofwestminster.us/Agendas. I will now ask all of you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The next item on our agenda is the consideration of the minutes of the preceding meeting. But before I go into that, I would ask for a moment of personal privilege. I would ask each of us to enter into a moment of silence in recognition of Officer Gordon Beasley and Good Samaritan John Hurley, who died in senseless violence last week in Arvada. We appreciate both of their service and sacrifice, and I'd like to take a moment. Thank you. Our hearts go out to the Arvada community, to their family members, and to everyone in law enforcement. I'm sure this has a deep impact on them. Now I'd ask City Clerk Parker to lead us in a roll call.
Mayor Protem Demott.
Present.
Mayor Sights, here. Counselor Seymour.
Here.
Counselor Scully, here.
Counselor Smith, present.
And Counselor Vols.
Here.
Thank you. The next item will be the consideration of the preceding meeting minutes. Mayor Protem Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the June 14th, 2021 meeting as presented.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There has been a motion and a second. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Okay.
All opposed? Motion passes. The next item will be presented by Counselor Lindsey Smith.
Good evening. I'd like, is this on? Okay, cool. I'd like to invite Mr. Johnny Brand up with me. Yes. Mr. Brand, you have served on our board for more than 20 years. And I'd just like to personally thank you, but on behalf of the board, or excuse me, council, would like to thank you as well. Is there anything that you would like to say to the community and to your board?
I just want to say and recognize and thank them to Dee Martin and Karen McGinn. When I was chairman for all that time, I could not have done the job that I did without their help. It would have been a whole lot harder without those two. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world. And whereas volunteers can connect with local community service opportunities through hundreds of community service opportunities, including serving on Westminster boards and commissions. And whereas, in recognition of the volunteer service to the city of Westminster, John Brand, who is leaving his service on the personnel board for more than 20 years. And whereas, the personnel board was established under Chapter 1512? I can't, I don't know what that one is. But, and the city charter to provide for a civil service system under the merit principle of personnel management to afford qualified employees of ability to appeal some employment-related issues to an independent community board, which has been selected by the Westminster City Council. And whereas, the efforts of city boards and commissions is of paramount importance to our community, including the work of the personnel board. And now, therefore, I, Anita Sights, Mayor of the City of Westminster, Colorado, on behalf of the entire City Council and staff, do hereby proclaim appreciation to John Brand for his 20 years of service to the city of Westminster as volunteer on the personnel board. And request my fellow citizens to recognize John Brand and other boards and commission volunteers for their significant dedicated service and contribution to our community. Signed this 28th day of June. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Smith, and thank you very much, Mr. Brand, for that years and years of service to this organization and to the community. The next item on tonight's agenda is public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the City Council on any topic they choose. This is not intended to be conversational, but rather a direct communication from the public to their representatives. There are now four methods available for participation in public comment. You may testify in person, submit written email testimony, record a voicemail to be played back during the meeting, or request to speak live via the remote meeting link through the city clerk's office. Please see the posted agenda for details on how to participate using any of these methods available. At this time, I would ask the city clerk to please summarize the number of participants this evening and introduce our first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, we have three people who have signed up to speak in person, which we will get to momentarily in this order. First speaker is Tim Pegg, followed by Kathleen Fuller, and followed by Larry Dean Valente. At the conclusion of our live in-person speakers, we also have four voicemails that will be played that were received through our remote voicemail system by the deadline. And we also received one email that was added to the packet and forwarded to council today. So at this time, Tim Pegg, if you could please go to the podium, and you will have five minutes to address the City Council.
My name is Tim Pegg, and I live at 10435 Independent Circle. I was disappointed in City Council's recent no vote on the affordable senior housing development at 73rd and Lowell. Counselor Demott helpfully explained his rationale in a video posted to Facebook, saying that pollution in the soil presents an unacceptable risk to the senior citizens who would have lived there. But I think this explanation raises more questions than it answers. The spill affecting the development in question was already being remediated in compliance with CDPE's voluntary cleanup program. There are approximately 34 properties in Westminster undergoing remediation through CDPE V cup for a variety of uses, including residential. For example, Schoenberg Farms includes affordable senior housing and was approved in 2016. What makes the site at 73rd and Lowell special? Can Counselor Demott explain what is the contaminant of concern at the site and why it seemingly needs extra caution as compared to other sites in town, which are already being managed by remediation experts? What is the standard for this particular contamination which should be implemented? Why does he think existing remediation standards and methods wouldn't work here, whereas they are seemingly okay in other parts of the city? Where will Westminster get $1.7 million to repay the HUD grant? And further, where will Westminster get the money for any required cleanup at the site? It's my understanding with this no vote, we have lost federal assistance with the cleanup effort. Even the crappiest possible use, a parking lot, will require some cleanup. Wouldn't it be in the interest of the citizens of Westminster to have this funded by the federal government? I'm extremely skeptical of this rationale, and I hope that the counselors who voted no, most of who have not tried to explain themselves, can do a better job of it.
Thank you for your comments. Ms. Parker?
And next is Kathleen Fuller. If you could approach the podium, please. And you'll also have five minutes to address the City Council.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Fuller, and I saw your sniveling performance on Facebook last week, Mayor Protem Demott, in which you whined about the injustice of being held accountable for your actions, in which you deprived senior citizens of affordable housing here in Westminster. You cried crocodile tears over it and claimed that the site wouldn't be sufficiently clean. So I ask you, Mayor Protem Demott, Counselor Seymour, and Counselor Smith, what expertise do you have that are exceeding those of the EPA, the CDPE, and the multitude of environmental remediation specialists who were able to evaluate the site and determine that it could be cleaned up to a level that would be satisfactory for residential use? Further, Counselor Demott, Counselor Seymour, and Counselor Smith, if you really truly know based on all the supposed expertise that this site cannot ever be deemed safe, then why aren't you concerned about the site up gradient of the plume, the source of the contamination, which currently functions in office space? What about the site down gradient, where the contamination plume may travel if not addressed? What about the residents to the west and the high school to the east? I would argue it's pretty clear that you don't give a damn about the people of Westminster based on this. You may hide behind claims that you uphold conservative values, but none are demonstrated in your actions regarding the site at 73rd and Lowell or the much-needed maintenance at our wastewater treatment plants. You may claim to be concerned about family values, but clearly don't care about making Granny homeless or giving little Bobby Giardia. You claim to be concerned with facts, not feelings, but refuse to follow well-established standards regarding remediation and water equipment lifestyles. So, life cycles, excuse me. You claim to be fiscally responsible, but cheerfully piss away $1.7 million in funding grants and refuse to address our aging infrastructure before it becomes an expensive emergency. You claim to worry about property values in Westminster, but have not cleaned up a derelict property or considered how mandatory boil orders will affect us. So who are you actually serving? I was thrilled to see that Counselor Demott is no longer wearing his controversial hat, but your newest hat advertises for the super-secret group, which members can pay $140 a month to, to be given a list of rules to follow so they can become independent thinkers, lions, instead of following rules like sheeple, which seems to be kind of ironic. Of course, if you actually want to join the super-secret club and learn the super-secret handshakes, you'll have to pay $7,500 to a con man who racked up $18 million in debt before declaring bankruptcy. So how thrilling for the people of Westminster that this is the financial expert that you're choosing to model yourself after. Counselor Seymour and Counselor Smith, I know we all come up here and doggone Counselor Demott because he acts a fool and it's easy, and you two get to sit here and quietly get your agendas passed without criticism. It's straight out of the Mike Pence playbook. But let's not forget that those who supported Pence eventually turned on him. Playing games with unscrupulous leaders benefits no one. The upcoming recall election is nothing but a farce designed to expand the power held by you three. You are lying to Westminster when you continue to promote the lie that compromising the ability of our wastewater treatment facilities to operate somehow will result in everyone in Westminster having a free emerald green lawn. It's disgusting, and you should be embarrassed.
Thank you. Ms. Parker?
And the next speaker is Larry Dean Valente.
Good evening, members of council. That's quite an act to follow. Lots of vitriol. I come here tonight to talk to you about the new sign code. I have some serious concerns with the upcoming elections, recall elections, vacancy elections. You name the election, we got an election. But in looking through it, I believe there are several sections that are unconstitutional in light of the 2016 ruling of Reed v. City of Gilbert, Arizona, such as limiting the number of signs one may have on a property, charging a fee if a sign is over a certain size on a private property. I believe those are unconstitutional taxes on free speech and in violation of the First Amendment. As I continue to read through the side code, sign code, I also noticed some references that were quite vague. No blinking flashing signs unless you're in the downtown area or the station area. Where are those areas? What are the definitions of those areas? What is a snipe sign? They're prohibited. I couldn't find anywhere in the code a definition of a snipe sign, so I had to go on a snipe hunt to find out what a snipe sign is. A citizen shouldn't have to do that. We have a lot of important issues coming up in the next month or so with recall elections, which you just can't find much about on the internet from the city website. But be that as it may, I think that our sign code has some very serious constitutional flaws, and I think it would be incumbent upon this council to charge your city attorney to do some investigation and make some changes to the ordinance and pass an emergency ordinance and get in conformity with the Constitution of the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Valente. Ms. Parker?
That concludes our live speakers. At this time, we'll ask IT to please queue up our four voicemail public comments.
Unless E. T. called in tonight, I think this isn't working, so. We ask for a little patience as we work out this IT difficulty in playing these voicemails.
Mayor Sights, if you'd like to move on to the next item, when I get confirmation that we're ready to roll, we can come back around to these voicemails.
My concern in doing that, without knowing what the voicemails entail, they may address something that is in our consent agenda or one of the items that are on our agenda. And so I would want everyone to feel fully heard before we were to vote on those, as this is an avenue to participate. My apologies for being a snigger on that.
And I just received a message that IT is looking into it, so apologies.
I apologize. I've asked City Attorney Frankel if I'm perhaps being too precious. It seems to me that if we have public comment, we should hear public comment before we go on to our agenda items. That I don't have legal background, so just verifying my reading is correct.
I agree with you, ma'am.
Mayor Protem Demott?
Can they hear?
Thank you. Then perhaps we don't need a legal. I think it just feels appropriate. City Attorney Frankel, do you want to chime in?
No, I'm just glad if council's able to reach consensus on this, that's fine. You should have comments ahead of your.
My name is Beth Caldwell.
And we are ready to play your voicemails now. Sorry about that.
My name is Beth Caldwell, calling about the train layout that Youth and Model Railroading put in the Westminster library. It is to show what the children can do when they have good instruction through Larry Stride, again with Youth and Model Railroading. It does not take up any space in the library to talk about or that much space. It needs to be left there so people can see what the kids did. Thank you.
This is Chris Stimson, living in the Cotton Creek area of Westminster. I was a attendant at the Westminster City Council's study session on June 21st, which I'm bound to report resembled a Lotto game rather than a government meeting. City staff tried once again to give counselors number-based options for paying for clean water in our city. And once again, enough counselors insisted instead on an external audit of our well-proven process to second-guess them. The four options presented by Public Works and Utilities Director Max Hirschbaum seem to have one common feature, namely that if the adopted plan would be revenue-neutral, some number of responsible residential water users would be penalized to satisfy the appetites of those who treat water as a free and limitless commodity. Let us for the moment table the details of the options presented. One was varying the parameters of the tier system. Another was adding a fourth tier. And the other two were to eliminate one or all of the tiers. And instead, step back to look at the big picture. We do not live in a tropical rainforest, nor even the Louisiana coastline or any other littoral zone. We live in a prairie. Early pioneers and settlers called this area the Great American Desert and practiced drought farming. Many still do. If you want to know what this area would look like in its natural state, look for the nearest patch of land that has not been cultivated, developed, irrigated, or overwatered. That's right, it's prairie, supporting nothing more verdant than milkweed, prairie grass, and prairie sage. Anything else we try to do to it is, at the very least, less than natural and not sustainable. And you should know that the North American prairie is one of the most endangered ecosystems in the world. You should also know that, according to climatologists, of the various known effects of climate change, flooding, excessive heat, stronger storms, spread of disease, drought, wildfires, loss of species. The one that most affects Colorado is water stress. Note, by the way, the present tense in that verb, "affects." Water stress, the lack of available water for basic human needs in the given zone, is not a future threat. We don't have enough of it now, and there'll be less of it as time goes on. Two months ago, Westminster enacted a drought watch, followed by Northland declaring itself to be in drought stage one. It's happening, and it's happening now. Some Westminster residents ask why their water rates are so high. One reason is that the city is legally obliged to guarantee clean, reliable drinking water on even the hottest day of the year. Imagine a mid-July day with triple-digit temps and backyard sprinklers in constant use all over town. This means that our water infrastructure has to be robust enough to meet the most extreme conditions and still perform. This leads to costs. A second reason, you might say, is that residents are receiving a price signal, similar to one you might receive at a gas station when the economy is trying to persuade you to drive less fuel-thirst cars. Given the climate conditions I've just described, if a Westminster resident has not enacted measures to mitigate their water use, they might reasonably expect such a signal. And if half an acre of perfect Kentucky bluegrass is of paramount importance to this resident, that resident should perhaps investigate real estate opportunities in one of the climate zones I listed earlier. None of us is special. And certainly, none of us is more special than the reality of our climate. Thank you.
This is Emily Brooks. For over a year, I've followed staff presentations and City Council discussions regarding water and wastewater systems, infrastructure, maintenance, capital programs, and rates. There is an abundance of quality information that's been presented to council, as well as an impressive amount of historical information regarding the scope and condition of the water utility and associated rate requirements. I appreciate having access to all of this data, as it has enabled me to go out and share the information with other residents. I was surprised during the June 14th council meeting and the June 21st study session that some of you are now expressing concerns and doubts about the process and methodology used to quantitatively evaluate our water system and establish rates to support it. These concerns echo sentiments some of you have expressed throughout the last year that there must be some other way of doing this that would allow a reduction of rates. And if only someone else could figure this out for you, it would be okay. It's clear to me and many other residents I've been speaking with that city staff has laid out in great detail what the current situation is and that a rate increase is necessary to ensure the continued safe and high-quality operation of the water utility. I am now convinced that there are some council members willing to do just about anything to avoid acknowledging this fact or who would like to stall the decision until after upcoming elections in July and November on the hope of others joining you in your quest for what I believe are unachievable and irresponsible water rate reductions. Last week, staff presented multiple options for adjusting the current water rate tier structure. This was at your request, as there seems to be a belief that if only tiers were adjusted, then everything will work out just fine. Impacts to rate tiers of each option were described. Council was asked if there was agreement on the 2022 revenue requirement that these rates need to generate. Some of you do not agree with that number. And instead of making a choice that would either cause some to pay more or underfunds the utility, you now want to ask for an audit of how rates and revenue requirements are determined. I find this absurd. You offered no specifics, just a blanket rejection of the work of the capable and knowledgeable staff and experts who continue to come before you in good faith, while some of you respond with nonsense. What aspect of this plan are you questioning? The capacity of the system? The capacity of the system, the current age and condition of the system, and the risks associated with not performing repairs and replacements of aging components? The fairness of a rate structure that asks high-volume users to pay more for the water they choose to use, rather than put the burden on all ratepayers? The fiscal parameters that are established to ensure we maintain the financial resources and stability that allow us to fund the small and large capital projects now and in the future? I know water's not on the agenda tonight. At your next public discussion, I'd like you to address the real concerns you have about your duty to establish water rates for the next year that meet your obligation to the city and its residents. If you want to fund the water utility at a level below what staff identified is the minimum responsible level, you'll get to make that decision, and you'll be responsible for the associated risks to all of us. Thank you for allowing my comments tonight.
Hello, this is David Carpenter speaking. I live at 10762 Ross Court in Westminster. And good evening, councilors and mayor. I am calling regarding the multimodal improvements to West 100th Avenue from Sims to Alkiere. I have a couple of thoughts on this. Number one, I totally understand the need for additional bicycle infrastructure in this area. However, I don't think this concept alignment is in the right spot. First, I think we could save a lot of city money if, instead of building a 12-foot-wide concrete bike path equal to a travel lane on 36, by, we could easily put a four-foot asphalt lane on either side of existing West 100th Avenue and have a perfectly safe bicycle facility there. It seems like we're spending a lot of money to build this concrete path. Now that said, if we do continue with this concrete path, I would suggest routing the majority of it south of 100th instead of north. I believe that tying into Alkiere Street the way it's shown on the Project Visanti map, it will cause another crossing point at 100th and Alkiere, which is, which is unnecessary, considering we already have a crossing right there at the Dog Park interest for the Greenway Trail. We could just tie in from that Greenway Trail and head west along the south side of West 100th Avenue over to Alkiere, understanding that in the future, there will probably be an extended lane along Alkiere for it to tie into. But I do believe that it would be much less expensive and better for the taxpayer interest if we merely put a four-foot asphalt lane on either side of West 100th Avenue for, for the bike path. So I would recommend that you vote this down until you have your, until you revisit this concept and see if we can't have a slightly less expensive alternative. Thank you very much for your time, and have a wonderful night. Bye-bye.
That concludes the voicemail comment for this evening.
Thank you so much, and City Council appreciates everyone who takes the time and energy to communicate with us. Let us know what your concerns and thoughts are. I would ask city staff on those two comments that were really requests and kind of discussion of concerns, if someone can follow up. And I believe that was Mr. Carpenter and Mr. Valente. Next item before us is the consent agenda, or I'm sorry, is the report of city officials. I was almost going to skip you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have four brief items tonight. I want to first of all recognize, on behalf of the full city staff, Tom Brand, his service to the city. That was, I'm going to shake his hand this evening, I'm proud to have done that. Thank you, HR staff, for the compliments that he provided to you are well-earned. Appreciate all the work you do at First Snowboard. Secondly, just very briefly, we're hosting July 4th fireworks in our city, and we're inviting residents of Northland to join us. Detail information about the fireworks display and the related programs with fireworks, both here and in Northland, or on our website. I would encourage folks to look at that. We have a couple of upcoming agenda items I want to mention to you. First of all, OnWater 2025. We have, over the course of many months, a couple of years, been working towards building a water treatment plant that has had several points of impact input from the, from the council, and we're coming forward yet this year with three items, starting on the next meeting, July 12. This will relate to the design of that facility and other matters related to the, to the future of the facility. I would just ask you, when you look at that, I wanted to mention it to you tonight, because, you know, the future of Water 2025, and particularly the Water Treatment Plan, I think, from what I've heard, are still in some question. What I hope we don't, aren't questioning is the fact that there is going to be a need to replace this facility that was built in 1969. And we're moving on the assumption that it will need to be replaced. The method, the timing, the cost, those sort of things, I think we're still working through, but this design work will actually help that. So we're going to be on the agenda July 12. I'm going to send you, councilors, some information this week and the next couple of days as background, prepare you for that, because that comes out on Wednesday, give you a chance to think a little bit more about that important point on July 12. So thank you for the ability to comment about that. I want also the public to hear that that would be coming on July 12. My last comment is really to suggest that tonight, on Agenda Item 12A, you consider addressing an email letter that we all received from the Fraternal Order of Police in Westminster that relates to collective bargaining. I had not heard of this previously. I appreciate being copied on that, to be aware of the fact that the FOP was promoting this concept to you. And I would tell you that, you know, there's a lot of information that I think needs to be put together to discuss what's required within our charter, what's available to us in state law. But most specifically, I'd like to, on behalf of the city, all, all of you and all of our residents, and particularly our workforce, have a chance in the next several weeks to, to talk to our police officers, as I've done routinely over the course of my seven years in this job, and hear whatever grievances they may have, that they believe that they would, would be improved through collective bargaining. I really respect the right for collective bargaining in this country. In fact, I support it. It's, it's been a part of my career over the years, and I think where it's done effectively, it can be very helpful to the relationship between labor and, and workforce. And I think our firefighter collective bargaining agreement is an example of that. But it's got to be thoughtful at the same time, and it needs to be addressing some very specific ideas. So for tonight, I would suggest you, you know, some of you have indicated you'd like to ask questions about it and to comment. I'd suggest that your 12A, you do that this evening, and the city attorney and myself and the city staff will be taking notes. If there are things that make sense to answer tonight that are legal, related to the charter, I think the city attorney is able to do that, but I would suggest you do it under that, under that heading. Lastly, I just want to also report that actually the chief is a bit ahead of this matter. He and I have been talking since he returned from a well-deserved leave about getting back in front of the, the, our police officers and our roll calls, and he's going to be doing that, starting, I think, in the next week or so. And now I'll join him in that. I've tried to do that a couple of times a year, and boy, those have been really helpful. I think over the course of the seven years, the councils I've worked for have been extraordinarily supportive of addressing many of the concerns and issues that have been brought up by our police, and we're ready to roll our sleeves up and do the same with whatever these concerns are today. So thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight, and be glad to hear what you have to say about all these matters moving forward.
Thank you, City Manager Trip. The next item is city council comments. Are there any comments from my colleagues tonight? Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to recognize a gentleman that has had a great impact in the family on, on Westminster. This last week, myself and Mayor Protim Demont was there, along with several hundred members of our community, to honor the passing and the life at a funeral mass for John Joseph Joe Shea. He passed away at 92 in April, but because of COVID, like many people, it was the first opportunity to, to have family and friends together for that. An amazing family, an amazing life that has benefited Westminster. I did not know this until that eulogy that, that he and his family had fostered 62 foster babies. Just an incredible amount of giving, a great Westminster family, and his, his passing, though, leaves a legacy to continue and something to live up to for all Westminster residents. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments and my condolences to the Shea family. Counselor Vols?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to update my colleagues and people listening in tonight about the activities of the Human Services Board. A lot of people know this, but I'll, I'll say it again. The Human Services Board awards $130,000 to about 30 different human service groups and nonprofits around our city. They are meeting on July 14th and begin interviewing and talking about which groups get money, how much, so that's, the process is starting. They did have a chance, like I mentioned before, about two weeks ago, they met with the five new nonprofits. I mentioned those for the public record, but they're moving forward, and July 14th is their next meeting, so they're hard at work. I want to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vols. Are there any other comments tonight? Seeing none, I'll just give a brief update on what I worked on last week. I did have a North Area Transportation Alliance board meeting last week. We first had an update from Smart Commute, and June is Bike Into Summer Month. They highlighted some programs from different municipalities. Brighton and Northland both have a full moon bike ride, community bike ride, which is upon ideal, maybe we should steal next summer. They also talked about something that I think is really relevant for Westminster employers that are over 100-plus employees. It is called E-Trip. So the Air Pollution Control Division has proposed to the Air Quality Control Commission rules to help us implement our greenhouse gas reduction. And E-Trip is Employer Transportation Ridership Program, I believe, is what the acronym stands for. But for companies that have 100 employees or more, you would be working to submit how you are going to reduce single-vehicle occupancy. What we want to make sure, especially here in the North area, where we haven't received as many transit opportunities as other parts of the metro area, that there is a geographic equity component to the formula, so that we don't penalize businesses that don't have transit options that exist in metro Denver or in South Denver. So that was feedback that we've given. It appears from the Smart Commute update that that has been heard, and they're working with employers and working with the Air Pollution Control Division and the AQCC to make sure whatever formula they come up with looks at geographic equity, and then also equity with the types of jobs. Certain jobs, people have to travel around in a single occupancy vehicle. So as many people know, I am a proponent of, of working on reducing emissions, but we also don't want to penalize businesses or an entire region and make it less competitive. We also voted Westminster was added to the NADA priority project list, two of our projects. And another thing that I want to highlight for our residents is RTD is going through a fair and equity study for September. They're also going to be looking at service changes. So fair studies take a very long time. They take about 15 to 18 months to go through all of the federal requirements. And RTD is known as a pretty expensive transit agency. So this is an opportunity right now to have your voices heard on the type of service you want and the fare that you'd like to see. So there was a meeting tonight. There is one on July 1st at 5:30, and then Wednesday, July 7th at noon, to give your input on this. You can go to the RTD website and look at how you can participate, but there are virtual options. Finally, we received a report on the RTD accountability recommendations, their final recommendations, and how they're hoping to fold them in. And so that was kind of the meat of what we talked about at NADA. The next item I want to mention, and I've told my colleagues about this before, but just to the general audience, I had the opportunity today to participate in an educational video that was filmed by the Babitt Center for Land and Water Policy, part of the Lincoln Land Institute. This, I was asked to participate because Westminster has been seen for decades as a leader in land use and water supply planning integration. Our comprehensive plan is a document that's integrated with other different plans, including our water supply plan, making sure that we really understand the impact of any new development, that we have the water supply and the infrastructure to meet that development. While water has been a controversial topic in Westminster the last few years, nationally, we are seen as doing the right thing and are recognized for peer, by peers, as a community that others should emulate. This project had started prior to COVID, way back in 2019, and so it is not a partisan issue. They're not going to release the video till, till much later date, but really, it's highlighting the work of, of city staff, and I was just a small participant in it. But I do want to recognize the good work that Westminster has done, and leaders before my time have done, to make sure that we are well-planned and a well-served community. With that, I would just echo City Manager Trip's invitation to join us on 4th of July at 9:15. We will have fireworks, and I think a lot of us last 4th of July missed some of our traditions and missed the gatherings. And while it won't be exactly like we're used to, we're just so happy to celebrate our independence and the freedom we enjoy in this country, together with our neighbors. So I hope to see you there. The next item before us is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a group of routine matters to be acted on with a single motion and vote. Council, at this time, does any member wish to remove an item for separate discussion? Seeing none? At this time, I will take a motion to consider the Consent Agenda. Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt the Consent Agenda, Items 8A through 8C.
Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
All right. This is a roll call vote.
Mayor Protim Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sights?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Item 8A through C, the Consent Agenda passes 6 to 0.
Thank you. The next item is Appointments and Resignations. As we have none tonight, we will move on to Item 10, Public Hearings and Other New Business. The first item is 10A, Counselor's Bill Number 23, and I get a motion. Mayor Protim Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass Counselor Bill Number 23 on first reading to approve the proposed amendments to Title 14 concerning Employee 401A Defined Contribution Plan that includes implementing a five-year vesting schedule for the employer contributions.
Thank you. Counselor Scully?
I second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this item?
Mayor Sights, we have a number of items this evening that are together under Items 10, 10A through, 10A, B, and C. I'd like to call Deputy City Manager and CFO, Door, to the podium, if you would please, and we'll, we'll go old school tonight. I'll be at the podium, so thank you, Larry, for being here. I know you have some introductory comments you'd like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Trip, and I hear myself through the microphone, so no need for me to do a microphone check. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protim, and council members. Once again, Larry Door, Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer. As Mr. Trip mentioned, we have four items before you tonight that are, that are integrated, that are somewhat interdependent. The first you just passed on your Consent Agenda, and that's the financial report through the end of May. And I want to start there, just in terms of context for these upcoming three items, by beginning with that financial report. The city's financial strength and recovery continues. That was reported to Mayor, Mayor Protim, and council on May 23rd, at your financial retreat, just about five weeks ago. And at that time, I overviewed And at that time, I overviewed with our team the April year-to-date financial results. And again, we reported a very strong recovery from the pandemic happening in our city. Well, that's continued with the May year-to-date report. In fact, things are are very strong. And related to that, at that time, at your financial retreat, we described a number of opportunities for Council to take action to amend its 2021 budget in light of this very unique and positive recovery that's occurring. So the next three items give the opportunity to really impact and have a change in community services to the public, infrastructure, employment, and workforce attraction and retention, and also to impact our operational efficiencies as a city government for the community. We've written an extensive staff memo under ten B that outlines the many changes, all of which were directed by you during our financial retreat on May twenty-third. We've just taken the time to get that organized in these three matters before you're here tonight. And while that memo is extensive, I thought I would call out the one thing that evolved even just in the last five weeks, and that is related to pay and benefits. We've seen other cities make steps during that short period of time to increase pay for workers in municipal services. Related to that, we've revised what was originally proposed to you as a one percent increase to a two percent increase for our exempt, non-exempt, sworn, and non-sworn, our hourly's and seasonals, all of our workforce, with the exception of our commissioned firefighters. So I wanted to call that to your attention. I'd be remiss if I didn't point it out here verbally, and it is a part of the the written staff memo. And I'll just close by saying I have with me our complement of department heads and other managers who are responsible for implementing and having made recommendations for these three items before you're here tonight, and that all of them are within your strategic plan and Council's guiding principles. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions on any of the individual items, or I'll call on any members of our financial services team to address those questions. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Would it be appropriate to ask questions on the other two items, or would you rather wait till we get to those other two items?
I think it would be appropriate to, as we go through each item.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions on item ten A? Seeing none, I will just say on this item in particular, I do think that this is an appropriate vesting schedule that will make us more competitive with our peer communities, and I appreciate the innovation and research that went into the recommendation. All right. City Clerk Parker, will you please do the roll call vote?
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Yes.
Item ten A, Counselor's Bill number twenty-three passes on first reading on a vote of six to zero.
Next item on the agenda is item ten B. This is Counselor Bill's number four. I will take a motion. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselor's Bill number twenty-four on first reading, amending the adopted 2021 budgets of the General Utility Enterprise, Water, Wastewater, Storm Drainage, Golf Course Enterprise, Legacy Ridge Golf Course, and Walnut Creek Golf Preserve, Parking Management Enterprise, Fleet Maintenance, Sales and Use Tax, and Parks, Open Space, and Trails Funds.
Counselor Vols.
I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on item B one? Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious, between B one and B two, there's an amount of new FTEs that are in the memo here. Are those FTEs part of B one? Are they part of B two? Is B two just strictly payment adjustments for current employee?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Demont. Once again, Larry Door, Chief Financial Officer. Those two items go together. One is our pay plan, and one are the budget appropriations. So they are interdependent. There's no real elegant way to do those all-in-one omnibus approvals. So I just want to say that one depends on the other. Those new FTEs, I know that we had some attachments available relative to the legislation. I'd be happy to cover any of those individual items. But yes, I just want to describe that those two go together and are
I understand that. I guess my question is to be more direct. I have some problems with some of the additional FTEs, and I'm concerned about growth, especially coming out the other side of COVID. I mean, fingers crossed, things are going really well, but you know, we continue to monitor that, look at new variants. And I just feel that now is the wrong time to add more FTEs. So I'm just curious. I don't want to, however, I don't want to not give the pay increases to our current workforce. I'm just curious if B two were to pass and B one weren't, what exactly does that?
I think at this point, I should defer to your city attorney for the potential options to amend any one of those particular items. And I think if it were described and discussed by Mayor and City Council and an agreement to amend for any one of those particular elements, there are many items in this omnibus proposal. And I think if there was consensus and it was addressed through the amendment process. But I'd like to defer to City Attorney David Frankel to to describe how that might work in operation.
Thank you, Mr. Door. Question I have is if the Mayor Pro Tem's questions are specific to the pay plan amendments that are proposed from the finances perspective, is the B one budget adoption that's proposed independent of the pay plan amendments? If the questions are really focusing on the pay plan?
Yeah, I guess my, just to be specific, I'm in favor of increasing the pay plan. I'm not necessarily in favor of the new FTEs. Although, as you said, there's a lot of other things in there that are good, and it's, you know, this is one of those difficult things that not going to get everything necessarily you agree with. But I'm trying to understand if there is a avenue that doesn't hire those FTEs right now, but allows me to still vote in favor of the pay plan increase.
Okay, so then the budget itself, it seems to be the focus of the question. You're going to say that the budget includes a certain number of FTEs that are proposed. And, Mr. Door, is it your question as to how that might be modified by Council this evening?
I think if Mayor Pro Tem's desire, thank you, City Attorney Frankel. I think that if it's the if it's the desire of the City Council to amend the budget to decrease appropriations, leaving a position perhaps in the pay plan but not providing the funding for it. I think if that's the desire, then the the position would be present, but not the funding, and would delay the potential to 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 hire the role. I would propose that the best way forward would be for Council to have a discussion. And if there's agreement to not proceed with one of the positions, Mayor Pro Tem, we would just have you amend either the pay plan or the budget, or most effectively both. So I think
I want to weigh in on this, Larry. I would ask that you adopt the budget and leave it to the City Manager to determine how to spend that budget. In other words, if there's if there's a desire to reduce the spending, I understand that. But when we bring this to you, we look at all things that are necessary to staff the city. We look at equity in pay. We look at the ability to retain people, and we look at the positions that we need. And if there's a desire to reduce spending, I'd like to go back and take a look at that in the context of everything that we've provided to you. And I would prefer that you not cherry pick individual positions to approve here on the dials. I'd like a chance to go back and try to meet a budget. In response to that, City Manager, I appreciate your your input and your viewpoint on it. It's not cherry picking in my mind. I am uncomfortable at this point adding any headcount that is outside of public safety or utilities, to be frank. So I would leave it to my my colleagues, though, to to give me their input as the oversight body of this budget and part of our responsibility. I just want to make it a discussion point that I have some uncomfortability with it. And so I'm open to hearing what my colleagues think.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Does anyone else want to engage in the conversation on item ten B? Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I brought this up initially at the study session, too, as far as we were going to have a line in discussion on on certain positions. I, too, along with Mayor Pro Tem, don't don't want to throw out the good, you know, just just for small amounts on there. But I do have concerns on some of these positions. I think it's important that we, and our residents have seen this too, in an opening up, that we are able to fund those positions to get our allow our residents to enjoy those things, especially park directions, libraries that have been so critical to them during the pandemic, and expand them from here. I have some concerns on a couple of these positions, and I did voice them during the study session myself. But I will be supporting the budget as it is right now, and then we'll have that discussion about accountability moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Seymour. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have one of my thoughts, questions that came to staff this morning was in regard to the question that we're just talking about. So one was that why is it coming to us mid-year, right? When we looked at the proposal of a 2022 outlook as far as an entirety of a holistic picture. So I, it's it's very uncomfortable to look at it mid-cycle, mid-budget, especially coming out of a COVID pandemic. I realize that through clarification points that we're in better standing than we originally had thought, which is outstanding for for us as a city and lends to the work that our staff is doing. But this just makes me uncomfortable, just mid-cycle. I know that through our budget discussion at our retreat, some of those questions had come up for myself as far as are these positions warranted at this time. The other the other question I had, and lends more specifically to one of the FTEs on here, and one that I've been trying to push forward, is the Language Access FTE. I think it was a FTE. And so I just wanted to know if that had more of an ADA focus, not just with linguistics, but for those who are hearing and visually impaired.
You've asked a couple of great questions, Counselor, and I'm sure all of you have the same viewpoint on all the positions. You want to know why we're hiring positions and what what they're doing, why they're necessary. I will tell you, we've had this discussion in previous meetings we've had. Maybe not to the detail that you need tonight. I'm very, very happy to provide more of that detail. What I'm really getting at tonight is adopt the budget you're comfortable with. And if you're not comfortable with the the pay plan positions, you know, then I'd say, give me a chance to describe to you again those positions you have objections to. I I don't I don't have any issue with doing that, because apparently you either haven't heard previously what we've said, or we didn't we didn't say we didn't say it often enough or clear enough, and I'd like to provide that. We can do that in writing starting tomorrow. You know, I will tell you that the positions that you have in front of us were vetted down from many full bore positions that were requested to be refilled in the city. And going through the pandemic, and I'm, you know, I'm pretty, this is this is important, because what we did is we got through a pandemic, knowing that we had needs for people. We didn't have money. The answer to the question that you asked first is that the differences that we now know, we have some revenue, we have some capacity, and we've made, I think, a responsible decision to not fill things that we needed earlier at a time that we now have the capacity to pay for them. So, but I'm more than happy to provide more information on any of these additional positions. I'm just I'm just going to tell you that if there is going to be a reduction in the spending, the amount of money you want us to spend, then I want a chance to go back and look at the big picture, everything that we said and talked about, city staff, eleven departments, and all the people that are impacted by this, and bring and make a decision as your manager, you know, on on how to apply those funds. So does that answer your question, Counselor Smith?
To a to a point, yes.
Let me let me follow up. What else do you need?
I think you made your point as far as if we need further clarification on those positions, you're able to provide that. And I think, yeah, I think I'd rather have that. It would make me feel comfortable having that discussion, not just once in in a budget retreat in May, but during our September retreat, when we look at an entire entirety of the budget and how they relate to the the bigger picture of the city.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate, we're trying to fill these now because we have the capacity to do so. We're trying to do it in this year because we've had people that are filling gaps that we have in the organization, and we're going to try to fill these as quickly as we can. The fact is, there's a big gap between when we authorize these positions and they actually hit the organization just because of the economy, the way it is, and just capacity. So if I were to delay this to the adoption of the 2022 budget, you know, we're going to be putting on the staff another six months or so of working over and above, which you can do for a period of time until the organization suffers.
Thank you.
That answers all your questions. Counselor Smith? Okay. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And City Manager Tripp, you answered a lot of my questions as well. I will be supporting this tonight. We worked very hard in May to agree upon a budget. We had it. We had two days to ask questions, to to work on this process, and we came to an agreement, and this is the result of that agreement. And so I'll be moving forward as approval for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Are there any other comments? I would just like to back up and say I have been really proud of how this, oh, I apologize, Mayor Pro Tem. Did you want to jump in?
I think I hit the button, and you already started.
Okay, okay. I just was going to say, when we initially met, talked about what we needed to do for 2021, it was hard times, and we had to make a lot of hard choices. And we had great conversations, and I felt like we really hurt each other. And while I recognize we got to a budget that not everybody voted on, I felt everybody's fingerprints were on that budget. I had a sinking suspicion when we got to meet in May that sometimes good news can be hard, because you have to prioritize where we put those dollars. And there is still some uncertainty that exists. But the the level of rebound that we have seen in our sales tax numbers and in our financial reports, the cost savings that we had, the federal assistance, have put us in a much better place than we anticipated we would be in. And it is not untypical, it is not out of the ordinary to have an appropriation mid-year. That's pretty typical, because the money that we get is taxpayers' money, and so it should be used on services for the taxpayers. This is allowing us to serve some pretty latent needs in our community. I think a lot of people in our community have been at home. They want to be back at parks, recs. They want to they want to be involved with their city, and this is allowing us to staff up to meet that demand from our community. So I also will be supporting this. I really appreciate the conversation. I do appreciate that when we met in May, it was, you know, I thought we were going to focus more on 2022, but in May, we were we were, the the bulk of it was talking about, hey, we can open the valve, I think, and and put a little bit more money into that 2021 budget. These are the principles we're looking at. These are the issues we're looking at. What are your thoughts? And we had some great conversations. But I left there feeling that we all got on board, and I'm still there, I guess, because I do want to make sure the services we offer our community match the needs of our community, particularly as we're coming out in a really a time where where community and connection means so much more than it ever has. So I will be voting yes tonight. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for the conversation. Although I still am uncomfortable with some of these ads, and I wish that we would delay them. I will be supporting this because I think there is more good than there is negative in it. So therefore, I will support it. But I do think that this conversation is the right conversation to have, and if we have concerns, that we should, this is the place to raise them. So I appreciate you having the conversation with me, and and we can move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mayor Pro Tem. Counselor Smith?
Yes, thank you. I the I just wanted to finalize my thoughts, because I don't think I said one way or another my my vote tonight. And I appreciate the, I appreciate all of our conversations, right? As far as being able to move that needle. And so I wanted to be transparent in the the fact that, yes, it does happen, appropriations do happen mid-year. But I guess I was under the expectation that it would be in a 2022 inclusion for those FTEs. And so while that just makes me And so while that just makes me a little uncomfortable, we did, I think, I do agree, Mayor, that we walked away in May having somewhat of a consensus that we would be that these are good FTE positions to focus on. Not that they're necessarily necessarily parks and recs and entertainment-related services, but for the holistic betterness of Westminster, we're looking at adding these for services. So while I'm still a little, just a little uncomfortable with that mid-year cycle, I I will be voting yes.
Thank you so much, and thank you, everyone, for the conversation. Seeing no one else in the queue, Clerk Parker, can you lead us in a roll call?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
And Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Item 10B1, Counselors Bill number 24 passes on first reading, six to zero.
The next item is item B2, which is Resolution Number 21. Counselor Scully, since you started the motion, would you finish it out?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution Number 21, amending the 2021 pay plan.
Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
There has been a motion and a second on Resolution Number 21. Is there are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Resolution Number 21 passes six, zero.
The next item before us is item 10C, Counselors Bill number 25. Do I have a motion? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill number 25 on first reading, amending appropriations for the 2021 budget using available carryover funds from 2020 for the general sales and use tax, general fund stabilization reserve, utility, water and wastewater, fleet maintenance, general capital outlay replacement, parks, open space and trails, golf, legacy and walnut creek, general capital improvement and parking management funds.
Counselor Seymour?
I second.
There has been a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on Counselors Bill number 25? Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question for staff. So I'm looking on on the memo here and it talks about being able to make whole the general fund stabilization reserve. And I know prior to COVID, we were using some of the overages to help bank money for the municipal court replacement. And I'm just curious, now if I didn't see it in here, I apologize, but is that something that's going to be part of carryover as well?
CFO Door, I'll leave it to the expert. I think I understand the the answer, but I want to make sure that we get it right. So.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Trip. Larry Door, once again, CFO and Deputy City Manager. During last year's budget as adopted, funds were transferred relative to the general fund stabilization reserve. Because of the way the year closed out, those funds were were not needed and carried over. So now this makes the a return of those general fund stabilization reserve for the 2020 results. And as we outlined in the overview of our annual financial report and and during Council's financial retreat. So those funds were transferred during 2020, transferred back through this carryover to make the the general fund stabilization reserve whole.
Counsel, Mayor Pro Tem and Larry, I think there's a question specifically related to money that we've been saving for the for the municipal court building. And I know we drew down on that account as we did many of the capital accounts. So could you respond to that, maybe what that fund was and what it is today and the impact on that? Because there was some impact.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to call on Seth Plas, who is our Policy and Budget Capital Planning Analyst, who can talk a little bit about the the dollars related to that particular project. I know that we froze a lot of capital projects. We've been able to reinstate many. And I just would like Seth to to comment, Mr. Plas, if you could, if you're able to join us here tonight just very specifically to talk to us about that one particular capital project. What was drawn down? What was replenished during 20 and potentially during 21, sir?
Yes, thank you, Seth Plas. That CIP was put on administrative hold, as were many projects. There are a good amount that have been essentially unfrozen and the city is able to use. That project is is still currently on hold due to not needing the funds in 2021. As far as the amount utilized, I I apologize, I do not have that information. And maybe someone else from Policy and Budget could jump on to answer that question?
You know, I I don't need an answer tonight, Mr. Trip. I would just like an answer, you know, in the future. I'm curious about kind of the plan forward because although I agree, you know, that about it being frozen still, I'm just curious if we did draw it down, how much did we draw it down and kind of just the plan forward? Because I do still think that that's important to the future of this.
Yeah, and I'm going to hearken back to a conversation we had in another issue. You know, we're looking at space changes in the organization on the basis of public commuting and a lot of other things that have happened during COVID. And so I think this pause is probably healthy because we're also going to look at that and whether or not there's really a need to build a full building or whether there's some other way that we can meet that need. But I appreciate the fact that you support the program and you're keeping an eye on it.
Thank you.
In our 2022 planning, next quarter, when we have those next steps in the budget process, we'll we'll be able to provide a full update on capital improvement preservation plan of the city and and bring that to light at that time. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, Clerk Parker, please lead us in a roll call vote.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Item 10C, Counselors Bill number 25 passes on first reading with a vote of six to zero.
The next item before us is item 10D1. This is in regards to an amendment to a construction manager contractor contract with Concrete Express. Does anyone want to make this motion? Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute the First Amendment to construction manager general contractor contract with Concrete Express, Inc. for Phase One and Phase Two pre-construction services for Sheridan Boulevard Multimodal Transportation Improvement Project in the amount of $29,710, thus raising the total authorized amount of this contract of $441,460.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
Are there any? I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Counselor or Clerk Parker?
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Item 10D1 passes six to zero.
Mayor Pro Tem, would you like to complete the motion?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to execute Second Amendment to the construction manager general contractor contract with Concrete Express, Inc. for Phase One construction services for Sheridan Boulevard Multimodal Transportation Improvement Project in the amount of $6,950,318, thus raising the total authorized amount in this contract to $7,393,778.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Clerk Parker?
Mayor Pro Tem Demont? Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
And Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Item 10D2 passes six to zero.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize an additional $1,993,283 in contingency for Phase Two construction services, thus raising the total authorized amount of construction manager general contractor contract with Concrete Express, Inc. to $9,387,061.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote. Clerk Parker?
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Item 10D3 passes six to zero.
And then Mayor Pro Tem Demont, item D4?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to authorize the reallocation of $140,000 from the wastewater project savings account into the 89th sanitary sewer work project account.
Counselor Seymour?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, this is again a roll call vote. Clerk Parker?
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
And Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Item 10D4 passes unanimously six to zero.
The next item before us is item 10E1. Is there a motion? Counselor Smith?
I move to authorize the city manager to execute an amendment amended engineering design services contract with Alfred Benish and Company for the West 100 Avenue and Sim Street Intersection Improvement Project in additional amount of $109,769, bringing the total contract amount to $289,462.
Counselor Scully?
I'd second.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm I'm just curious if staff had any input on the the call that we got specific to this item and the concerns that were addressed.
Mr. Trip?
Community Development Director, Dave Downey, would you please handle this?
Yes, Sir. Mr. Trip. Yes, I did hear the the comment during citizen communication, two comments, actually, I heard. One was regarding alignment of a of a path, the north versus south side of 100th Avenue. And the other comment I heard was a 12-foot-wide concrete detached path versus four-foot-wide attached asphalt regarding that first comment about alignment. People may not be aware of what causes the very odd offset of 100th Avenue as it crosses Sim Street. Those of you who drive out there certainly know what I'm talking about. There's a irrigation ditch that runs along the south side of 100th Avenue and crosses, I think, in a north easterly direction from there with a very large head gate of some sort. That that's why 100th has never been been realigned there. It's a very expensive proposition to deal with that irrigation head gate. And that's one very good reason to put any kind of multi-use path on the north side of 100th. Yes, I do acknowledge that when you get down to Alchire in the future, there might be some gyrations that are necessary. But I think it's much easier than trying to put the path along the south side there at that irrigation head gate. Regarding the asphalt, attached asphalt versus detached concrete, need to keep in mind that we're talking about a multi-use path here, not just a bike lane. We're going to invite pedestrians to to use this path. And I don't think you want pedestrians, those of you who are familiar with that portion of 100th Avenue, you don't want pedestrians walking right on the edge of the traveled roadway there. It the the detached concrete meets the city's own standards and specifications. We like to follow our own specs whenever we can. And I believe there's some Dr. Cog requirements in that regard also.
Great. Thank you very much for addressing those concerns. As you said, that's in my backyard, up for Seymour's backyard. So I certainly am excited to see this move forward because I do think it's been a longstanding safety concern. So I'm glad that we're addressing it and that you could address the citizens' concern.
We are too. Thank you.
Counselor Vols?
Yeah, I had a question for Mr. Downey, I think, as well. Sorry, sorry. I also, this has been a long time issue. I'm glad to see it move forward. It's not in my backyard, but I'm glad to see it move forward. I was also going to ask Mr. Carpenter's question. Would you be answered? My other question then is, is there potential for a two-surface path here? You know, in other places, we make crushed gravel, so people who jog like that a lot. And then people who have strollers and bicycles stay on the pavement. Is there any potential for doing that? I know I've worked with Jason Gank on that in the future or in the past to kind of go that direction. Is that possible for this strip or is it not possible because of the closeness to 100?
Counselor, I do not know the answer to that question, but I'd be happy to investigate that. I know exactly what you're asking. And we'll I'll talk to I'll talk to the engineers tomorrow and find out the possibility and we'll relay that to Council.
Okay, good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Seeing no other questions, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Item 10E1 passes six to zero.
And I believe, Counselor Smith, you started that motion. Would you like to finish it out?
Yes, ma'am. Move to authorize an additional $10,977 in contingency, bringing the total project contingency amount to $51,098.
Counselor Scully?
I second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any comments, questions, or discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
And Counselor Scully?
Yes.
Item 10E2 passes six to zero.
The next item on the agenda is item 10F. This is an IGA with Urban Drainage and Flood Control District. Can I get a motion? Counselor Scully?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to sign the Fifth Amendment to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as the Mile High Flood District for an additional contribution of $500,000 from each party for the final design and a portion of the construction cost of the Big Dry Creek Drainage Project.
Counselor Vols?
I second the motion.
There is a motion and a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Vols?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. The next few items we are going to address here are amendments or contracts with urban drainage and flood control. Are they all or do we have 50% match on all of these? Is that typical? Or is that can someone answer, is this, are they always 50% or are these negotiated for this round?
This is Dave Downing, Community Development Director. Historically, Counselor, it's been a 50% match. I don't believe that's a hard, fast requirement of the district. But for as long as I can remember, we always, it's always a 50% match, yes, sir.
Good, thank you. Look, for for my perspective, I'm I'm supporting all of these tonight because it is a good deal for the city, a 50% match. And then if I'm not wrong, we get to tap into the expertise of this organization on drainage and flood control, which they're specifically suited for that kind of work.
Absolutely. These are experts in the field. We've had a long, close relationship with staff of the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, and it has paid off certainly in the tens of millions of dollars and maybe even more like hundreds of millions of dollars certainly during my career.
Great. Thank you for that answer. Thanks.
Definitely a great way to leverage partnerships to the betterment of the community. Are there any other comments or questions? Seeing none, it's like roll call vote.
Counselor Vols?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont?
Yes.
Mayor Sykes?
Yes.
Counselor Seymour?
Yes.
Counselor Scully?
Yes.
And Counselor Smith?
Yes.
Item 10F passes six to zero.
The next item before us is item ten G, another IGA with urban drainage and flood control. Can I get a motion? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the city manager to sign the first amended intergovernmental agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as the Mile High Flood District to encounter, I'm sorry, to encumber an additional contribution of one hundred fifty thousand dollars from each party for the preliminary design for the Walnut Creek Drainage and Flood Control Project improvements.
Counselor Smith.
Second.
There has been a motion in a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
And Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Item ten G passes six to zero.
The next item is item ten H. This is again another intergovernmental agreement with urban drainage. Can I get a motion? Counselor Smith.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the intergovernmental agreement with the Urban Drainage and Flood Control District, doing business as the Mile High Flood District to encumber funds in the amount of one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars from each party for the preliminary design of channel improvements to the Shaw Heights Tributary.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
And there has been a motion in a second. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
And Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Yes.
Item ten H passes six to zero.
The next item before us is item ten I one, which is a negotiated sole-source contract with Axon Enterprise. Can I get a motion? Counselor Scully, or I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move based on the recommendation of the city manager to determine the public interest would be best served by authorizing an amendment. Negotiated contract for sole-source provider Axon Enterprise, Inc. to include Axon interview and additional equipment not recognized in the initial project plan for necessary equipment for full deployment of the body-worn camera program, increasing the authorized expenditure amount by sixty thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars from five hundred sixteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars to the total authorized expenditure not to exceed five hundred seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars in twenty twenty.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There's been a motion in a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Counselor Vols.
Yeah, I just want to say I I want to commend staff because the packet tonight did address sole source and the reason this is sole source. Axon apparently is a very unique provider of this service, and we need them. So I I normally comment on sole source, but it was in the packet. I thank you to staff for that. I also think staff is the length, I guess I have a couple of questions, is the length of this, it's a long contract. It looks like we're looking at a long one. The length of the contract, though, saves money the long run. Is that correct?
Please, Chief Carlson, please, take this question. Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Tim Carlson, the Chief of Police, and if you could repeat the, it's a long contract, and I missed the last part of your question.
Is the is the reason for the long contract is we have a savings for having such a long contract with Axon?
Correct. By by being a part of a ten-year contract, we got a much, much better deal than a than a three-to-a-five-year contract, yes.
Okay, because it did seem long, but that's the reason why. Then I also see where staff, a team of folks within our city hall sat down and went line by line through the contract and saved over the period of the the life of this kind of fourteen thousand dollars by doing that effort. It looked like IT did with PD and all of that.
That's correct. There was that effort. I don't remember the exact dollar savings, but yes, they did do that, working with Axon in order to come up with those savings, yes.
Good. Well, thank you. Thanks for bringing this forward. Sure, I'm planning to support it. Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No questions, just a comment. And and I'm very glad to see this as a continuing effort. The council many months ago made a commitment to body-worn cameras. It's necessary now for the protection of our police officers, and this is just that next step of that full implementation. So I appreciate the continued hard work on this process.
I also want to say thank you for a very thorough staff report. And always, as a counselor, you you pause when there is an increase to a contract so soon after we have already agreed to an amount. But reading through the staff report and understanding this is so our officers can functionally do their jobs without having to stop and consider what they need to do with their body-worn cameras, but to allow it to be natural, allow the body-worn cameras the way we have it structured to meet the way officers actually work and the needs of our officers was compelling in the staff report. So I did just want to say thank you for that information. Seeing no other questions, comments, or concerns, let's go to the roll call vote.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Yes.
And Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Item ten I one passes six to zero.
All right. Ten I two, Mayor Pro Tem Demont, would you, and I apologize, I see that City Manager Trip was in the queue, and I think I might have skipped him.
Thank you. I'm I'm certainly willing to do this at the end. I just want to recognize Norm Hubbard and Tim Reed, who were the staff members. I know Norm is here. I just want to recognize their work on this, which which has been stellar from the very beginning. Thank you. Thank you, Norm, and say thank you to Tim as well. Thank you.
Apologize for stepping on the compliment there, Eric. Apologize, City Manager Trip. All right, Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to amend the contract and authorize up to nine additional one-year renewals for interview services with Axon Enterprise, Inc., subject to annual appropriations, increasing the annual amount by twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars for the years twenty-twenty-two through twenty-thirty, for a total ten-year expenditure increase of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars as follows. From five hundred and eighty thousand, forty-four dollars to six hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the years twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-five, and from six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars or two hundred and six dollars to six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine for the years twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
There has been a motion in a second. Are there any comments, questions, or concerns on this item? Seeing none, it is a roll call vote.
Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
And Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Item ten I two passes six to zero.
The next item is ten J. We're going to hold a discussion about the city's response to COVID nineteen and possible next steps. City Manager Trip.
Thank you. I just want to remote remarkably comment remarkably that we've been doing this a long time, and I want to recognize our Public Works Utilities Director, Max Kirschbaum, for coming up here. Gosh, for sixty-some probably consecutive Mondays and the work that you've done. We have a short report tonight. Max, would you come up and make that report? But thank you for the many months and weeks of work that you've done here. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tripp. And of course, you know that I don't do any of the work. I just say the words. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. Tonight will be very short. I have two quick slides and one comment. If I could get the slides up, please. Next slide. In keeping with what we've been doing for the last several weeks now, here are the the two slides respectively for Adams County, and the second one will be for Jefferson County that shows the the current rate of hospitalization per one hundred thousand people over a two-week period. You'll notice that both of them are below the zero point five mark, which is enables both counties to remain in level clear. While hospitalization numbers statewide are down, case, total case numbers are down. I'll just note that the state epidemiologist on a trip out to Mesa County and Grand Junction last week due to made that trip specifically to that location, to Mesa County, because there is a an outbreak of what is known as the Delta variant of the of the virus and potential concerns there. And I something that she said caught my attention, I think we all ought to pay attention to is is the fact that that variant now accounts for more than fifty percent of the cases in the state. The other variants are very minor in comparison, so that would be the one to continue to pay attention to. I don't want, I wouldn't want to dismiss it and say that these numbers look good and we have nothing to worry about. We're good to go. I I think vigilance remains, and for those who are not fully vaccinated, to continue to follow the the basic rules that have been asked at every level of government. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you. Unless there are any questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont does have a question for you or comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Max, for all your work over many, many weeks. I think my question actually might be for the group. I'm just curious at this point if we might think about coming back in person for study sessions. Seems like we've been having technology challenges. Not pointing fingers, or John. But I I'm just curious when we might evaluate coming in, and I think there's a lot of value in being face-to-face in our conversation.
So Mayor Pro Tem has a question for us on council. I would tell you, I'm fine with getting back for study sessions at any given time. I have found that technology challenges that challenges particularly frustrating. They do, I think, limit communication. I I have found that I do not understand or know from just functionality if that is more difficult for staff to pull off or not. So I'd like to hear from staff first, but I don't have a reason. Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I I agree with your assessment. I would entertain coming back into like council for both council meetings and study sessions. Because I have, I too have had technology issues where my internet has dropped. So it is frustrating nonetheless. So, yes, so I I would very much like to be face-to-face with you all. I think that we accomplish much more, more together.
Thank you. It appears that City Manager Trip has something to add.
I don't want to jump any other council.
No, you're next in queue.
You know, these are your meetings, and when you choose to come back live, we'll in person, we'll we'll accommodate that. What I will do by next week is I'll ask the staff to comment if there are any particular concerns they have with any matter related to that, and we'll just provide that to you. But this is, these are your meetings, and when you're ready to come back, we'll make that happen.
Thank you very much. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would support coming back in person for study sessions. Just a reminder, I will not be available for July seventh or eighteenth, whatever date that Monday is, but all others seem good.
All right, Counselor Vols.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I I also would like to see us get back in person and and kind of face-to-face each other while we're doing these discussions. I think it's helpful. So I would support that. And I just ask, why was everyone looking at me when we're talking about technical problems?
I can't imagine the reason.
Last month was really bad, is the word. So I would support that for a lot of reasons. I I would like to see us also, though, allow staff, if possible, have the option to you do remote, if that's if they're not comfortable with it, we allow that. But I think it's nice for us all to be together. We can make that decision, but and allow them the choice. So thank you.
Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. I too I too wanted to just chime in. I I think it's a we're right. It's helpful. Yeah, there's technology right there. It's helpful, and it 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 furthers our discussions, too.
Thank you. I do have a question, actually, for Director Kirschbaum in regards to the Delta variant. Are they saying that, a two-pronged question, is the vaccine effective against this variant? Or have we seen bleed-through in fully vaccinated populations? Or are you unaware?
I I read about it, but I am not qualified to answer that question.
Trying to give you another job title as public health director.
No, thanks. I'm 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 pretty content with my day job.
Um, so that would be something I'm I'm curious about. And then, as we're, you know, everything's opening up and we're providing more programming, it would be nice to know if there is a concern with the fully vaccinated population. And then my second question is for children. For those that have, you know, by by the grace, have not not been overly impacted by COVID up until now, how are we seeing the impact of the Delta variant on our youth?
Yep, the the demographics that they do, but both counties as well as the state do show some breakdown by age. And you don't see those numbers in the in the youngest age, youngest age groups. I think most would agree, strong advocacy for getting the vaccination for those who are eligible, twelve and over. But doesn't seem, I don't I don't see data that shows that younger children are affected in 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 any alarming number.
Thank you so much for that update. I know for many of us that have children that are too young to be vaccinated is a worrisome, worrisome time. That gives relief. Are there any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you so much. The next item before us is item twelve, or I'm sorry, item eleven. This is a Counselors Bill number twenty-one, the second. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to pass Counselors Bill number twenty-one on second reading to approve the proposed revised oil and gas land use regulations.
And Counselor Vols.
A second motion.
There has been a motion in a second. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns on this item? Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to put on the record again of my no vote. When I first voted no on this, I mean, it was mainly because due to not being in alignment with state and county requirements.
And Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to reaffirm that I will be supporting this bill tonight, and I thank the staff for their work to meet the request of the council over time and to work with us. So thank you.
We have a motion in a second. I see no other comments or questions. Let's lead in a roll call vote.
Counselor Smith.
My apologies, City Clerk Parker. It appears there was a question from Mayor. All right. He's eager to vote, so. All right. Sorry, let's start the roll call again.
Counselor Smith.
No.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Yes.
Mayor Sights.
Yes.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
And Counselor Scully.
Yes.
Item eleven A, Counselors Bill number twenty-one passes on second reading on a vote of five to one.
The next item before us is miscellaneous business, and I know earlier tonight, City Manager Trip mentioned having a conversation on the FOP proposal for collective bargaining. My assumption is Mayor Trip, you want to kick that off? Or would you like council to start?
No, I've made some preliminary comments, and I really, that really covers my comments for this evening. I think city attorney, myself, and of course, the staff, my staff are here to hear your comments and pick your questions down. And as I committed earlier, we'll try to get back to you as soon as we can, potentially within a couple of weeks, with answers to your questions and a further discussion. If there's a value to answering some of those questions this evening, we'll attempt to do that. A lot of those probably will come from the city attorney related to the how in this process.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Tripp, for accommodating the request to have a discussion about this item. And I know I was one of the ones who sent an email asking to figure out a time. I didn't necessarily anticipate having the discussion tonight, but I want to at least address a couple of my items that I want us to address as a body, because I do think that there's a time constraint around this. I believe what we're being asked is to authorize this to be put on a ballot. And some, I would like to be reminded of the time constraints about that. I also am curious about two other things. One, would it be possible to have representation from the FOP to actually address this body? The other portion of that that I'm curious about is other options.
The other portion of that, that I'm curious about, is other options to not, not go to the ballot and a charter change. I know when collective bargaining was brought forward with the firefighters, it was done as an ordinance through council. And I believe, in my opinion, the electorate spoke clear about public safety and collective bargaining when prior council asked that question. So I'm just curious if there is other opportunities to address this and provide collective bargaining to the police department in other manners. So those are, some of the issues are not issues, but the things I'd like to hear brought back to us. And I'm curious how quickly that could happen with the time constraints that are on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte. Are there any other comments or questions? Counselor Smith.
Thank you. I was also supportive of talking about this, not necessarily tonight, but thank you for introducing the topic. You know, when I was asked about this, I think, much to what you said, Mr. Trip, there's lots of pros and cons we got to look at. We got to look at the whole picture here. And when I was asked about collective bargaining, it's not my favorite way to provide a service. And it's mainly because it's, there becomes lots of constraints that happen around the service when it comes to collective bargaining. However, I am for giving it to the voters. I'm for making sure that our voters are heard on this issue. And so whether that is putting it on the ballot for them to decide for us of what that would look like as Westminster, I'm supportive of it. So I would support a majority of this, but just know that I'm a little cautious moving forward on it.
So I think what you're asking us, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, and I appreciate everyone's contributions to the conversation, but is, what questions do we have so staff can analyze the proposal that's been given to us and then also address those questions in a report to us? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. The City Attorney has a lot of knowledge in this area and came to the organization with that and also with the Fire Safety Act that precipitated this on the fireside. You know, there are some, there are some state legislation that's different in this particular case. And there's a charter that we've got to consider. Additionally, it's, I think it's really important to all of us, what the individual and the whole of the police officers group, what their goals are and how we can accommodate those goals. There may be, I know that when we started a conversation with Fire Department in 2015, that actually didn't go to ever get to a ballot. It was approved by the council a couple of years later, but only after an awful lot of dialogue and discussion about how to get to a best practice in that area. And I think we have a best practice in collective bargaining and fire today with a very non-positional, interest-based sort of an approach we took, meaning that we bargain together. We bargain on behalf of the city. We don't bargain in positions against each other. So it's worked out well, but that took a while to get there. So I want to have a chance with the chief to talk to the police officers about specifically what their interests are in this area and what the City Attorney to be able to provide that to you. And I think we need to move really quickly, because, you know, the initiative here is a 2021 initiative, is what I've heard. What's been stated here, and I can just tell you that in checking with the City Attorney today, that requires action by this council in August. You know, that's six weeks or so away from today. So we've got to be, we put this on the agenda tonight because we really need to start it. We have any chance of doing it in 21, if that, in fact, is the best course. So hopefully that answers where the staff is with this.
Yeah, thank you. And I see Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte back in the queue.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did just want to address for the public, because we're talking about this and I realized that not all the public might know exactly what the ask was of the City Council. And so what transpired at this conversation was Westminster Police Paternal Order of Police Lodge 25 emailing council and letting us know that 94% of their body voted whether or not they should go after collective bargaining. And 94%, that's what the vote was in favor of doing that action. So from there, they reached out to council and let us know that they think that the proper place for that conversation to happen is with the voters. And so what the internal order of police asked the council is to put this on a ballot initiative. So I just wanted to make sure that people understood why we were discussing this, because I realized that they didn't get the emails that we all got. So I wanted to share that with the public.
Thank you. Thank you again for bringing this up tonight. It is a pretty ambitious timeline. I would like, I think Counselor DeMonte brought up a good point about we need to understand the timeline. I do like the idea also with comparing the request that was made, kind of the framework of what they would, what the question would be with what the firefighter question was. Because that took, you know, over a year of conversations and back and forth to make sure all parties could get on board with it before we were willing to put it on the ballot. And so it would seem we'd want to have a similar process or similar items that are eligible for collectively bargaining. So I guess a comparative analysis with what the CBA is with our firefighters. And then if you do have a meeting with the FOP, present to council what concerns are, like what is the motivation behind the request? But I'm assuming we're going to be talking about this sooner than later, particularly as we have a holiday Monday coming up, which compresses the timeline even further. Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Does that give you enough direction or do you have any follow-up items?
I don't. I have plenty, and we've taken lots of notes here. I want to defer to the City Attorney. You want to make any comments this evening?
Sure.
So having received their proposal, I guess it was last night, for the first time, staff is reviewing it and trying to understand what exactly is proposed. But I think it's, it may be helpful for council to understand what happened back in 2015 and 2016 as the firefighters submitted their notifications to management of their interest in collective bargaining. They were doing so under the Firefighter Safety Act. And under the Firefighter Safety Act, firefighters can pursue collective bargaining by following a certain process. And what happened in Westminster was that there was a collaborative effort to talk about how to move it forward, what type of question would be put to the voters, and getting the feedback from the voters on that question. The question that was asked of Westminster electors back in 2016 was pretty specific to the firefighters in terms of, it was entitled, "The Firefighter Safety and Collective Bargaining Question. Shall the City Council, City Westminster enact an ordinance by July 1 of 2017, which would prohibit Westminster firefighters from striking and create a mutual obligation between the designated representative of Westminster firefighters and the city, to bargain collectively in good faith with respect to such terms that include, but might not be limited to wages, benefits, and items related to personal safety, with such agreements made upon these terms memorialized in a contract enacted by the City Council with disputes resolved by non-bargaining arbitration with impasses to be submitted to the electors of the city for final resolution?" So that question went to the electors. It was positive. So staff then engaged in a process of collaborative, interest-based bargaining between the city staff and our firefighting team members. And that was, I would describe it as quite successful in drafting a collective bargaining agreement that was better for everyone and was a rather positive outcome. So the relationships were preserved through that process. I think it was a success story. So I would just point that out. And after the negotiations were completed, council was provided with a contract, which was then approved. So that would be one approach to consider. And that negotiation was undertaken in an effort to be consistent with our charter. We didn't change the charter as a result of any of the firefighter negotiations. We crafted a collective bargaining agreement that was consistent with the charter. It would be a different approach to just change the charter itself. And I think it would be appropriate to investigate what types of changes are, you know, proposed and how those would integrate with the remainder of the charter. I think, you know, adding a new chapter at the end of the charter isn't necessarily going to solve integration of the whole charter as a single document, the governing document for the city. So I think it's going to take some time to evaluate that. But I just wanted you to understand that there are other options available for collective bargaining. It can be done without a charter amendment. It can be done by way of an ordinance and an agreement between city and employees that are in the bargaining unit. Very important to include the bargaining unit and get their input in the number of factors that go into the agreement itself. So that, and I would agree with Mr. Trip, the election deadlines this year, we would need to get the language to the county clerks not later than the beginning of September. So I think we'd need an action item on August, City Council agenda at the latest.
Thank you, Mr. Frankel. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the questions that I would have then is, I like the idea of an ordinance. I like being aligned with the collective bargaining of our firefighters. And I guess one of the questions that I would like answered in the research is charter amendments can be really hard to change. So if it becomes a charter amendment and then we lock that into place, if we ever need to alter it in any way, for any reason, it has to go to a vote of the people. Does an ordinance also have to go to a vote of the people? Or is that something we could amend as a council or as perhaps our police department? Or who has the right to amend ordinances?
Counselor Scully, thank you for the question. So the City Council adopts ordinances typically by two readings, with the exception of emergency ordinances, which have specific findings and can take effect on one reading. But council adopts ordinances, council modifies ordinances. Our structure in Westminster also recognizes that there can be ordinances initiated by the voters if they follow a process where I believe they need 10% of the electorate signing off on a question and it's 5% for utility-related ordinances, I believe. So there is a process set forward for citizen-initiated ordinances. And I believe also they theoretically can repeal ordinances that are enacted by City Council that are not acceptable to the electorate. So there are a couple of ways ordinances can be modified or enacted short of council involvement. Predominantly in Westminster, my understanding, City Council has been the body that does the ordinances and modifies them when needed.
Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you again, Mr. Trip and Mr. Frankel, for all the information and my colleagues for the conversation. It's the only thing I'm curious about, feasibly with this limited timeline and having to take a relatively quick action, when could we expect this back? We'll be in front of you at every upcoming meeting with some sort of an update. Thank you.
All right. This, I see no other questions or comments on this. This concludes all the business before the City Council. There is an executive session item scheduled for post-meeting discussion, which we will address shortly. It is now 9:40 PM and the City Council meeting is adjourned. At this time, we will move to our post-meeting agenda. Mr. Frankel, would you please introduce the item before us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The executive session proposed for City Council is to review and discuss city facility security measures pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 1113C6 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024D.
So we, I'm sorry. Mr. Frankel has read the executive session title. Is there a motion to go into executive session? Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte.
So moved.
Counselor Scully.
I second.
I will have each member of council affirm that they would like to go into executive session, starting with Counselor Scully.
Yes, ma'am.
Counselor Smith.
Yes.
The mayor as well. Mayor Pro Tem DeMonte. Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Vols.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all for joining us this evening. We will now go into executive session. And we will get a bio.